Good evening, everyone that came out and took the time out. I know this is late at seven. Some of you are just getting off of work and some of you just waking up. And some of you, like again, took some time out to come to this meeting to address some concerns and listen to some issues. And here it's changed some laws. So, thank you again for coming out. This is our regular meeting. It is Tuesday, May 17th, 2022. And at the start, every meeting that we have, we always do prayer. And then we lead by our Pledge of Allegiance. And today, we have a special guest, Mr. Xander, who's going to do it. He did it last, uh, our regular meeting, uh, at our council meeting. And he's going to do it tonight. I ask everyone to stand for our invocation. And then we're going to be led with our Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you.
How many, um, how many, Father, we thank you for this, this day. We come to you now, we come to you in the name of Jesus. We pray for our wonderful council. We pray for, for Mayor and the council in, uh, East Point. And let this, let this council go through this evening so we can get this business going and smooth, so we can get back to our family homes. We pray for our, our, um, our community, our community and the schools, the administrations. And I just wanted to, we just wanted to keep our, keep this, keep this, um, times so we can go smooth and all that. And we love you, Lord. We, we wanted to do that, all that good stuff in, um, in Jesus' name. Amen. We pray for our, our, um, our community, our community and the schools, the administrations. And I just wanted to, we just wanted to keep our, keep this, keep this, um, times. We, we wanted to do that, all that.
Now, yes, we want to thank all our police, um, in the city of East Point and all over for the work that they've done, um, to help keep us safe. And our next proclamation is for the National Public Works Week. That is May 15th through the 21st, and it's for ready and resilient. Whereas, public works professions, professionals focus on infrastructure, facilities, emergency management, and services that are vital and important. And I guess we want to thank all our police, um, in the city of East Point. It is in the public, there we go, public interest for the citizens, civic leaders, and children in the city of East Point to gain knowledge and maintain ongoing interest and understanding of the importance of public works, first responders, and public work programs in their respective communities. And whereas, the year 2022 marks the 62nd, I'm sorry, 62, this, yeah, 62nd Annual National Public Works Week sponsored by American Public Works Association. Now, therefore, we, the City Council of East Point, do hereby proclaim the week of May 15th through 21st, 2022, as National Public Work Week. I urge all citizens to join the representatives of the American Public Works Association and government agencies in recognizing our public works professionals, engineers, managers, and employees, and the substantial contributions they make to protecting our national health, safety, and quality of life. This is proclaimed this day of May 17th, 2022. So, we want to thank you for all the work you have done. Give them a hand as well. And we did our proclamations. Now, next on our agenda is roll call.
Councilmember Baker?
Here.
Councilmember Curly?
Here.
Councilmember DeMonico?
Here.
Councilmember Lucido?
Here.
Mayor Owens?
Here, thank you. The approval of the agenda, would anyone like to add or subtract something? If not, let's move forward.
Madam Mayor, I'll motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Support.
Motion to support, please. Carla, roll.
Councilmember Lucido?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember DeMonico?
Yes.
Councilmember Curly?
Yeah.
Mayor Owens?
Yes. Next is the hearing of the public. Um, we have a hearing of the public at the regular meeting in the beginning and at the end, you get three minutes. I don't start the time until you say your name and your residency, just to give, so I don't want that to be added to your time. We ask you to be respectful with those that sometimes children are listening in, and people from all walks of life, and we want to respect them as well as listening. So, the first hearing of the public is now open. You're free to come to the podium.
East Point resident. For over a year now, Great Lakes Renaissance property has behaved as a negligent landlord in not enforcing the right to quiet enjoyment clause found in all leases. Furthermore, the previous building administration did nothing to enforce the nuisance tenant ordinance. East Point Police states that all the complaints against the nuisance tenants next door to me automatically goes to both the building department and city attorney. Yet, there still has not been enforcement of the nuisance tenant ordinance. Director Rohib responded to a resident at last week's Neighborhood Watch meeting in stating that the problems with the nuisance tenants was if the police go to the, to the house three times, they're out. Well, East Point Police has far exceeded going three times to the nuisance tenants next door to me, and they're still there. Um, and the nuisance tenant ordinance has never been enforced. Both the tenant and the resident agent refuse mediation. Uh, the resident agent claims, "I don't have time for this. Call the police." When I've requested numerous times, she abates the tenant's continuous disruptive and nuisance conduct. For over a year, the nuisance tenants have thrown their trash on my lawn, in my landscaping, overflowed garbage cans, failed to pick up the trash that lands in my backyard, blasted their car stereos. Even after the police warned of issuing tickets, excessive horn honking on a daily basis, early in the morning and afternoon while I'm working, they continue to trespass on my property even after I've told them to not enter my property and stay off of my property. They have mangled my temporary fencing around my bushes. They've ripped out the fencing and thrown it on top of my bushes and have violently hacked away at my junipers out of vindictiveness in spite and not because it interferes with the rental property. They've continuously harassed me, used excessively vulgar language against me, and still, nothing has been done to enforce the nuisance tenant ordinance or hold Great Lakes accountable. And the resident agent is well aware of the ex-con living there in violation of the rental application policy. He was convicted in 2017, released in 2020. The application clearly states no criminal record within seven years. Therefore, the city, the city needs to enforce this and hold Great Lakes responsible in enforcing both the nuisance tenant ordinance and the right to quiet enjoyment. This is not to be shoved off onto me as handle it in a, in a civil suit. No, this, the city's known about this. The building department's known about this. The police have known about this. I'm asking again, do something. Enforce these ordinances. They must be held accountable. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else who'd like to speak at this time? Again, if you don't get, um, enough time, you can also speak at the end of the meeting and also send us an email if it goes beyond, you know, your, your six minutes and, um, with both times, yeah. So, thank you. Say, no one else would like to speak? The first hearing of the public is now closed. We're going to the approval of the minutes, council.
Yeah, Madam Mayor, I would move to, uh, accept the minutes of the, uh, special meeting of May 3rd, 2022, to receive and file.
Support.
Motion to support, please. Carla, roll.
Councilmember Curly?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Lucido?
Yes.
Mayor Owens?
Yes.
Councilmember DeMonico?
Yes.
Madam Mayor, I would move to receive and file the regular minutes of the May 3rd, 2022, meeting.
Support.
Motion to support, please. Carla, roll.
Councilmember Curly?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Mayor Owens?
Yes.
Councilmember DeMonico?
Yes.
Councilmember Lucido?
Yes.
And Madam Mayor, I would move to receive and file the special, uh, minutes of the meeting held on May 10th, 2022.
Support.
Uh-oh, sorry. Uh, Mr. Curly, or Madam Mayor, um, had just a couple, uh, minor amendments to those minutes. It was missing one animal control vote. Uh, we, we made two votes at that session. One was to approve the part-time position and then a second one to approve the full budget, because that first motion just didn't mention the full budget, and that's missed. And I think it's because the YouTube video skips at that point. I looked at it, so, um, I think we need to add that vote in. And then there were just two other minor things. When we talk about Mitten up here, it's M-I-T-N and not the word. And then Chapter 20 Drain is listed twice at the end of page four and then top of page five, so I don't know which one's the correct one, but it has the vote twice also, so that should be, uh, fixed, if we can make those amendments.
Um, okay, Madam, thank you, uh, Councilman. Madam Mayor, I would, uh, revise my, um, motion to receive and file with the additional, uh, corrections and additions by Councilwoman.
DeMonico.
DeMonico.
Sounds good to me. Any support on that?
I'll support it.
Motion to support with those additional, um, corrections. Carla, roll, please.
Councilmember Curly?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Mayor Owens?
May I abstain? I wasn't, um, there at this meeting.
Councilmember DeMonico?
Yes.
Councilmember Lucido?
Yes.
Moving right along, no scheduled hearings, no unfinished business. We're going to go right to reports from administration, starting with our city manager, Ms. Walton. Good evening, ma'am.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Um, first, I want to apologize for our sound issues. Uh, we did reach out to the contractor that put in the AV system, uh, just with concerns over the sound that we've been having. So, they've been in today, uh, made some adjustments to the system, and I think it was a connection with the Zoom. We're also trying to make sure that we can get the, uh, video and sound in and out from Zoom. So, there were some adjustments made, and they're coming back this week to finalize some stuff. Um, so, our apologies hopefully will be, uh, back and better than ever at the next meeting. Um, first, I'd like to start with, uh, COVID. Uh, we did, Macomb County did move into high risk, um, which is why we are back to wearing masks and, uh, social distancing again. Um, all of our boards and commissions will be required, uh, to wear masks at their meetings as well. Um, we have the parliamentary procedure training coming up on the 25th, uh, at 6:00 PM. If you're interested in attending, we do have a link on the website, and we've also shot the link out to all council, um, and then boards and commissions as well, so you can register for that. We have sent out a notice in the water bill. If you've seen it recently, spring has sprung. Uh, we are asking you to be a good neighbor, mow your lawn, uh, get rid of the weeds, uh, and take care of our lawns so that all of our lawns in East Point are looking great. Uh, there are some changes to the precincts, uh, for the, the elections coming up. We'll be advertising those. There'll be advertisements at the old precincts as requested by council. We have advertisements here in City Hall. We'll have advertisements in the newsletter, on the website, social media, and the cable channel. So, we'll do our best to get that information out, um, as frequently as possible, so anyone with a precinct change is aware of that. Um, we'd also like to recognize Lieutenant Hambray. Uh, Lieutenant Hambray actually graduated from Staff and Command School this past week. Uh, he actually was elected vice president of the 513th Class Director, uh, which is an incredible honor. Uh, so, we're extremely proud and happy to have him a part of our team. And then, I'd also like to thank, um, our controller, Danielle Palmerville in DPW. They are beginning to put, uh, the art installation in City Hall with the butterflies, the kites, uh, in the lobby. They've worked really hard. Um, I know Danielle spent a lot of time, um, actually off work, putting the, the kites together on her own, uh, and seeing that project through. So, we're really appreciative of, of the DPW team and Danielle, uh, and Ms. Holman, uh, for putting that together. Uh, with that, I can take any questions that council may have.
Any questions for our city manager this time? Saying none, moving right along to our finance director, Mr. Blum. Good evening.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and Council. Um, the only updates I have is the, um, the bond work that's being done, the SRF bond, the water sewer bond that we're doing. Parts one and two have been submitted to Treasury. Um, we, we met the deadline, which was yesterday. Um, and then the pension bond, we're just at the beginning stages of gathering data on that, and those are proceeding. And that's all I have for this evening.
Any questions for our finance director? Saying none, moving right along to our city attorney, Mr. Albright. Good evening.
Good evening, uh, Madam Mayor, members of council. I just had, uh, one item this, uh, this evening. Uh, Ms. Walton informed me earlier today, there's been some questions from residents that live on, uh, Johnston regarding the, uh, public, or the nuisance abatement case that we have. The address is 23203 Johnston. Uh, we're in the process of attempting to serve the, uh, the defendant homeowners. Uh, we believe that they have moved out of state and do not intend on returning to the property, uh, but we still need to, uh, serve them. So, we have to serve them via alternate servness, and what that requires is, uh, sending first-class mail of the complaint to the address, also, uh, posting at the subject property and, uh, publishing in the local legal news. So, that's where we're at in that process, and so it is moving forward, and the city intends on getting all of the nuisance violations and code violations abated at some point. Uh, and that may happen, uh, once we get a judgment.
Okay.
That's all I have, Madam Mayor. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions for our city attorney this time? Saying none. I want to ask our director, um, Director Rohib, do he have any updates for us? I know in other communities, they actually have a mic for their director, so the people can understand or know what's going on with the, with the crime and safety in their community. So, maybe we're going to have to work on that, because you're a major part of our community. We need to know what's going on. Good evening.
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, just real quick, I just want to acknowledge, uh, Lieutenant Marty Campbell. He'll be retiring from the police department this Thursday. We're going to have a little cake celebration for him at nine o'clock. He served 27 years here in East Point, and he's going to be missed. And also, we're hiring, uh, one firefighter. We will be hiring two police officers. And we had a Neighborhood Watch meeting last week. It was very successful, and that's all I have.
How many were in attendance at the Neighborhood Watch, you know?
Uh, probably about 30, 35, something like that.
Okay, that's a good number.
It was, it was a good meeting.
Thank you for keeping that going, even during COVID. Um, moving right along to, I'm sorry, did anybody have any questions for our director? Okay, saying none, moving right along. New business, the Association of Community Fraternal and Veterans Association presentation. And who will be doing that for us today? Uh, Councilwoman?
So, yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, I added this to the agenda tonight in hopes that we were going to be able to present the city with a check to pay for the Memorial Day Parade, but our checks have not come in yet from the bank. So, I just want to let everyone know in the public that we will be submitting a check to cover the cost of DPW and the police overtime for, um, the parade on, on Memorial Day. Hopefully, everyone can come out and enjoy it. It's a free family event, and it should be a lot of fun. So, I will make sure we get that to administration prior to the parade, and that's all.
Thank you. We do, we do have that on our Facebook and things like that for the Memorial Day Parade?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Do you, um, have any additional information for the residents that might want to be a vendor or sponsor or anything like that?
So, um, yes, uh, anyone that wants to sponsor the parade can, um, definitely do so. They can make, uh, donations to the, uh, Community and Fraternal Veterans Association, um, which is on the, which is listed on our agenda. And they can mail the, um, donations to the Military Museum. The parade is going to end at Spindler Park, so, you know, I welcome everyone to come out and enjoy. There's going to be a free picnic for, that is going to be hosted by the Odd Fellows. The parade starts at 11:00. I expect it to end around noon, um, on Memorial Day.
Sounds good. Thank you for that update and the work that you've done on this parade, as well as the other participants. Um, moving right along to the nine-mile reconstruction update. Um, I believe, uh, are we having, oh, we have our, um, director, Mr. Pulucci, want to talk to us about this? Hi, good evening.
Are you fine?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Ryan Kern was slated to be here, but we're having problems with Zoom. So, if you have any questions about the nine-mile reconstruction delay, I can answer them right now.
Uh, can you give us a, oh, did you want, Councilwoman?
I think I was about to say what you're about to say.
Go ahead, go ahead. Try me.
Can you give us all a brief, just update on what the delay is?
Well, the delay is water main construction material. Uh, the day we awarded the job, they ordered the materials, there's a delay on it. They'll be starting, uh, first, second week of June, um, the water main installation, and then the gas company's going to come in after that. By that time, there'll be no more weather to put in a new road, so we've got it slated for March of '23.
What do we put down after we dig then? Uh, what, what do we, like, we got to dig up part of the road for some of the water?
Uh, the water main, the water main is going under the north side of the sidewalk, and the gas mains are going underneath the south side of the sidewalk.
It, it doesn't cross the road? I thought it crossed the road at some point.
Uh, they do cross roads periodically, but for the most part, they're mainlining underneath sidewalks.
So, I'm just, are, are we going to have to dig up any of the road, and then what will we put back down?
We will most likely put down, uh, asphalt for the season. So, hot patch, not cold patch.
And then, I think I've got a question, maybe that's more for, uh, Ms. Walton or someone. I think it'd be nice, at least I'd prefer, and I don't know if anyone else on council does, I'd prefer like, uh, actual letter from like, the contractors stating that they don't have the materials and from MDOT then about the funding, just to make sure that that is not, um, an issue.
Okay, we already have something from MDOT that says the funding is secure. So, I have that already. And as far as contractor material, sure, we can do that.
So, you said, um, okay, what are you doing?
I just have one more question.
Yes, sir. Oh, yeah, I don't want to interrupt you.
Um, and then, so going forward then, if we're doing this first section of nine mile next year, then west of Grashit, will the other sections will be a year after?
No, we're hoping it'll just continue and keep going. We're, we're working on that right now with design plans and, um, easements.
So, we would do west city limits to Tuscany all next year then?
No, we would do from Grashit to Tuscany, I believe. So, from, from Beechwood to Grashit and then from Grashit to Tuscany.
Right, so, but both sections would be next year?
That's our hopes, yes.
Okay.
The water main is out to bid on that, and the gas plans are in design right now for that as well.
Okay. So, um, I guess you said cold patch, hot patch?
It'll be asphalt.
Okay.
Yeah, so it won't be a cold patch repair. They'll come in, we'll speak about that when it starts rolling along. We, you know, we'll compare those prices with temporary concrete and make a decision on what we want for a temporary repair until the road is, is put, put in.
So, you said we want to start those, uh, procedures till next, next year, so?
The road reconstru-, road reconstruction, March of '23, yes. But the water main placement, you'll see second week of June.
Okay. Now, the street in itself, you say you're going to start repairing it. When is that going to start now?
That won't be till March of '23.
No, that's a reconstruction you were saying. I'm talking about as far as patching, you know, sure.
Oh, you know, they'll go, as, as they tear it up and, and, and make the new installation, they'll do the temporary repairs, you know, within that week.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, it'll never be stone or, or, well, they maintain it.
Okay. This is really bad now, that's what I'm saying, anything that?
It may even be a little better with their maintenance.
Okay. Any other questions for our DPW director? Anything else you want to add, Director?
Nope, that's it.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All right, the next item is the approval of Amendment Number Four to the Water Service Contract between Great Lakes Water Authority GLEWA and the City of East Point. Ms. Walton, would you like to do a brief summary for those that are listening and what this is about as we move forward?
I'll actually hand this over to the finance director, Mr. Blum.
Okay, yes, ma'am. Mr. Blum, please.
Um, yes, the, um,
The GLWA contracts with the... Or the city contracts with GLWA, this is updated every four years based on volumes. We did have a meeting with them three weeks ago. Okay, yeah, about four weeks ago. What they had to do is confirm our volume usage. There was one day that was spiked fairly high during the three-year lookback, and it was determined that was during some hydrant flushing. So they waived that day, and they were able to keep the volume usage the same. If they had to increase the daily volume maximum to that high point, we would have seen a $235,000 annual increase in water rates. So we were fortunate that they did eliminate that from their calculations. But this is just something they do every four years with each one of the communities. The biggest change from the previous one is the addition of the Kelly and Eight Mile PRV. It doesn't affect the overall water usage, but it does give us a redundancy on service to the city. And, I don't know, anything else, Darren, you can think of?
I hope you covered it very well.
Okay.
So you're saying the change saves us money?
The GL... By GLWA excluding that one extremely high day, they did not increase our bill. So it saved us money from that perspective. It isn't saving us any money from previous bills.
Okay. Any questions on this, Council? Councilwoman DeMonica?
Yeah, maybe just one. So, right, you're saying then our maximum on that table would have had to have been higher if they did factor that one day in?
Correct.
Is that what you're saying?
Yep.
Okay. Cool. Yeah, I think that was all. Thanks.
Madam Mayor, I'll make a motion.
Yeah, I wanted to ask a question, because I know you said we do this every four years. Now, I know, when do... I should have asked this when it was your turn to... When we were talking to you earlier. Now, what is going on as far as GLEWA and the money that we're supposed to get back from taking care of the bill for Highland Park?
Well, we have not heard whether Highland Park is going to appeal that verdict. I know there was a suggestion that GLWA not pass along the bad debt, but that has not happened yet. If they do, the impact on East Point's water is only gonna be about $5,700 for the coming fiscal year. It would have a bigger impact on the sanitary district, but I do not have numbers on how much that could be.
I guess since we're talking on the contract, is there any way to stop them from getting funds for another community that we have to pay for? Is there any way to get around that?
The county was looking at a method where the communities would collect the money, but then set it in an escrow account and not submit it to GLWA. I don't know of any communities that are actually doing that. But I mean, you know, we're gonna get a bill. GLWA's gonna expect us to pay it.
I'd rather them expect us to pay it than we pay it for another community and then we try to get the money back. Is there... Since we're talking about this contract, is there something? Yes, ma'am.
Yes, so, Madam Mayor, if I may. So I do believe we did make... We did vote to put the money into an escrow account, did we not?
Yeah.
So our water money will be going into an escrow account for right now. I know that there are other communities also in Macomb County that are putting the money in escrows while this is in court. So if we win, if it ends up winning in our favor, we would keep that money in interest. If not, then we'd have to pay it to GLWA. So right now, it's still going through. So until that's determined, right now, we're just kind of at a standstill legally.
Thank you for that clarification. I know you was about to do a motion, Councilwoman.
Yes. Madam Mayor, I'll motion to approve the Water Service Contract, Amendment Number Four, with GLWA for a four-year term.
Support?
Motion support. Please call the row.
Councilmember Lucido?
Yes.
Councilmember DeMonica?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Curly?
Yes.
Mayor Owens?
Yes. Next is Item D, MERS Authorized Signatories Resolution. Is there something you want to speak on, Director Blum?
Yes, Madam American, touch on that.
Thank you.
MERS has put out a revised authorized signatory form. Instead of having individual names, they are having cities authorize positions. So as people change, they don't have to continually get replacement approval forms. What this would do is authorize the city manager with finance director as a backup to sign any MERS paperwork that is necessary. That way, whenever the city manager changes or finance director changes, it's just an automatic instead of jumping through the hoops to make these changes. This was supposed to have been done in July of 2020. Unfortunately, they still had Joseph Saboda listed as the contact and sent it to his email, so it got lost somewhere out in another world. So we're finally getting caught up to get this updated and cleaned up.
All right, Council.
Madam Mayor, I'll motion to approve the resolution, establishing authorized signatures for MERS contracts.
Support.
Motion support. You have some... Okay, I thought Councilwoman DeMonica was gonna say anything. Call the row, please.
Councilmember Lucido?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember DeMonica?
Yes.
Councilmember Curly?
Yes.
Mayor Owens?
Yes. Next, Item E, Introduction and First Reading Ordinance Number 22-1223, An Ordinance to Amend the Codified Ordinances of the City of East Point by replacing Section 2-525 with new Section 2-525 entitled C, City Fee Schedule for Public Records and City Services and Programs. Ms. Walton, did you want to start on this? I don't know where council... Did you guys want to go line by line or department by department? And call the department up as?
If you want, I can start off going department by department and just explain some of the changes. And then if you have questions on that department, I can answer those.
Okay.
Council okay with that?
Sounds good. I'll go with that. Thank you.
So I have both of the documents side by side. First, I'll start out with the first section in the old ordinance has the administration fees. Those are reorganized as they're mostly related to public works. So you'll see most of those fees moved over into the public work section because that has to do with a lot of right-of-way fees when you're vacating alleys, vacating easements. There was an increase to two of the fees, the zoning compliance letter and the fee in lieu of a tree. The fee in lieu of a tree is partly for development. So when you're doing like building work and you choose to pay a fee versus increase the green space or put the green space back in. That fee was increased as council has expressed concern and priority in replacing that in the City of East Point after development. We've also had a problem with that in the past several years in terms of complying, I guess, with the redevelopment. Zoning compliance letter, we've seen an increase in these, and it's taken a significant amount of time from the planners to review a lot of history for a location and the zoning. So the fees that were being charged from the building department for those zoning compliance letters is quite expensive and more than $50. So there is an increase to that as well. So I'll start on the new fee schedule with the assessing fees, the lot combination and lot split. We divided those between residential and commercial, so that's the yellow section. Residential, we increased to $150 per parcel, and commercial was 200. And then the address assignment remained the same. Does council have any questions on those fees?
No, ma'am. Don't look like you.
Okay. And we'll go into building department. This is where I would say 90% of the changes are when it comes to this fee schedule because it was based on the studies that were completed. So the first administrative fee goes over the snow, ice, and debris, and then the weeds. So initially, on the old one, it was the actual expense that is charged by the contractor plus an additional $125 administrative fee. We actually decreased that. We moved over to a new process of covering the actual fee and then a $25 administrative fee. The request in how we're moving with the ordinance is for it to be vendor-managed. So we have vendors that come in and review the properties and make a decision based on our ordinances if they're in compliance. And those... The charge for a contractor to do that is much higher. And then adding an additional $125 was significant in terms of a charge for a homeowner. So we want to pay the fee and then $25 because it's less work for our clerks to do the work. So there's a change there. The above-ground swimming pool, there was an increase to that fee. You'll see some reorganizing when it comes to zoning for a shed. The driveway sidewalk was reorganized into another department as well with a commercial or into another line item. Commercial and residential fence was also increased. We have it residential again, split between residential and commercial. There are different fees depending on the type of property and the size of property. Moving down into the plan review fees, those actually were decreased. So the breakdown for the residential plan review, the actual chart and calculation is extremely high. That should have been 0.002%, not 20%. So that's a very significant fee for development, and we adjusted that. So it's actually 0.002% of construction valuation, not 20% of the construction valuation. So that has actually decreased as well.
Yeah, I did the math on that one. And so it's like, um, I think something's wrong here.
Yes. All right. Special events, that was also increased. As we've seen, a lot of additional work going into the special event process even afterwards. We're requiring site plans, a lot of inspections, and then follow-up following the approval from council. Chicken permit, we decreased the fee. Pre-permit issuance, that is one that we actually removed. Liquor license inspection, again, was reorganized into the police department fees as that is something that they handle in terms of the inspection. Let's see. Going down, we did change the garage sales as well. We moved those because there are two line items, and it changed depending on how many sales. I know the biggest piece is more so for documentation and that people are not constantly selling. So we just kept the fee the same so that they register, but not increasing it depending on how many sales you have per year.
But I got a question.
Yes, ma'am.
So is there still gonna be the two limit per year?
Yes, the limit stays the same. We're not changing the ordinance. There just was no justification to increase the fee the more sales that you had. And then we'll move into residential rental property. This is one that we're actually working on in ordinance change as well in updating the ordinance to title it actually non-owner occupied properties versus residential rental. So you'll see a change in the title of that as we're going through the ordinance and bring that forward for an update. Let's see. So the late fee was also increased from $45 to $50 for those that do not register. We also added a one-time registration. That was a recommendation from the initial fee study that we had. So every year, there's a registration fee that goes on top of it, and then it moves into the inspection and reinspection process for the $200. So those were changed and reorganized. There was also additional like late fee charges that you'll see on the previous fee schedule that those were removed. There's also an extra item for a second inspection, which was kind of confusing to read as well. So it actually, in the new one, shows that the additional inspection or more, there's a flat rate there, a late fee and lockout fee. The lockout fee was also increased in that section. Let's see. Any questions on that part?
I think I had a question a little back.
Sure.
I guess just a general one, and hopefully, no one takes my... I don't know if it's advice necessarily. But the lawn and snow admin fee?
Oh, yeah.
Of $25 and the, well, pretty low rate, I think, that we pay. I was just slightly concerned, and I don't know if this was commented on, that maybe especially banks or something, they basically might just use the city as their lawn service? Which I don't know if that necessarily is a good or bad thing. I guess it'll be good for our contractor. They'll have more lawns, but then we wouldn't hit it till it's six inches, I guess, right? So...
Sure. So part of it is that before it was vendor-managed, it was a cheaper cut. So you're talking $25, $30 per cut, and then if you added the 25. But now with it being vendor-managed, it's taking less work from the city, and the contractor is actually going out and canvassing the city and then charging that. So that's a more expensive. So you're talking maybe $125 that they'd be bidding and handling that, and then 25 on top of that. So that's a $150 cut for your grass if you choose not to mow the grass that week. And then the following week, if you let it grow again, that's another $150. So it's not... I don't... I hope no one goes that route because it's quite expensive for grass cutting. But because of the change in actually how the ordinance is currently written, it is supposed to be vendor-managed where we bring someone in to actually canvas the properties and identify them and cut them. And then we get the documentation and the pictures so that we can verify the cut was actually done and entered into BSNA and then issue those invoices out to the property owner.
Oh, so to the homeowner, it's gonna end up being about the same price? Is that what?
Well, correct. But it also depends on the rate when it bids, right? So it could change year to year. So next year, or actually, this fall is when we go out to bid for all city... The lawn cutting for all city services. So it'll really depend on what is bid out. I'm estimating about $125 a cut vendor-managed. So it really depends on what it comes in. I wouldn't... That's part of why it's listed as expense because every time we go out to bid, that pricing could change.
Okay. Thanks.
Yes. So then we'll go back down into the vacant structures. So one of the conversations we had with vacant structures is the failure to register the vacant properties in the city. One of the recommendations in the studies was to decrease the fee from $500 as that may be something that's stopping people from registering. So we did decrease that fee. But again, similar to the non-owner occupied, there's an annual registration and exterior inspection fee so that we're going in and making sure that the home is in compliance. Again, some of those were also kind of confusing fees that we organized. So if there's additional inspections needed or a failure to certify, those fees are listed and organized as well. Bonds have not been utilized, so those have been removed. We're instead doing the escrow, and that's detailed later. The monthly meeting fees from the old schedule has been reorganized into planning and zoning fees because that's primarily what they were regarding. There was an increase for the regular special meetings, special use and rezoning that you'll see, again, recommended in the fee studies. And then also, there's an addition of the pre-development meetings. This is something that we're gonna talk about in the zoning update as well and having pre-development meetings with developers that come into the community or that are looking to develop in the community. We also took that recommendation from the study from McKenna and then an administrative site plan review. This is not something that we're gonna charge for now as there's no current ordinance, but that would be our recommendation is to have that process. So it would be appropriate to adjust that fee now while we're doing the fee schedule. You'll also see at the bottom details regarding the escrow. So usually, when you come in to do, go through the planning commission process, you would submit a $2,000 escrow fee, and the charges that come from the planning consultant would come out of that cost. So it's essentially just a deposit on the services that are the charges that will be incurred. Part of the problem that we've been experiencing, especially in the last couple of months, is some of the projects that are coming through, they're getting $1,200 returns after that. So a $2,000 deposit and the cost is only $800 can kind of be... That kind of slows someone down from moving forward with development. And so our recommendation would be that the building official determine, based on the needs of each specific project, what an appropriate deposit would be. So the... We do have it in here that it will not exceed the $2,000. But if it's a process that may only take an hour or a very quick review of a property, that he may adjust that depending on what the estimated cost from the contractor would be for service. So that is explained in the bottom. Right now, the escrow language is not in the fee schedule, and it should be, and it is needed. If you don't have any questions on that, we can move to the contractor section. So we reorganized these as well. All trades contractors, we listed at $45, again, in compliance with the fee study. study. And then we also stated that the registration is valid for the term of the license. So it's not just the year, however long your license is. Typically, it's three years for all of the trades, so we've organized that as well. Moving into the construction and installation permit fees, there was some increase into the construction from ten thousand dollars on up. Part of it was just in the small calculation, there was an increase in that to be consistent with the fee study. Permit extension, and then the fine for work that was commencing without a permit. We increased the fees, but also changed the fee based on a commercial or residential property.
Can I jump in?
Absolutely.
The construction cost section there, like, one to ten thousand, ten thousand to a hundred, can you explain, I guess, the second column? Or like, how does that whole section work? Can you just give, like, an example?
So it would depend on the development and the construction cost. So part of it is based on the state of Michigan construction codes and the square foot cost calculator. So there's like a whole process online that they go to with the estimate of how, what the cost is of the development that you're doing or improvement that you're doing to the building. And so there's a, basically, an equation that they calculate of what your fee would be if that is basically wherever, you know, your investment comes in at. So part of what was increased was the fifteen dollars per thousand square foot was the increase.
Except I think, if I did my calculations correct yesterday, I think like a ninety-thousand-dollar construction cost would give you a higher fee than a hundred-thousand-dollar construction cost, because it's like two hundred dollars plus fifteen dollars per thousand. I mean, if it's like eighty times fifteen is gonna be way over.
You said a ninety compared to what?
To a hundred. Because ninety would be in that ten thousand to a hundred thousand dollar range, and it's two hundred plus fifteen per one thousand in construction cost. I don't know, did that mean to be ten thou? I don't know. Basically, in each section, you'll have fees that are higher than the next section. I'd wanna round up and call it a hundred thousand and just say that, you know? Because if you do...
Well, because, so the calculation is a little bit different. So the ninety thousand would be two hundred dollars plus the fifteen, but then at a hundred thousand dollars, you already start at five hundred dollars plus fifteen dollars. So it's already an additional three hundred dollars plus for that fee.
Right, but the fifteen for every thousand is gonna go way over five hundred real quickly, right? What's eighty times fifteen? Four hundred?
Councilman DeMonaco.
Yeah, like twelve hundred bucks or something?
So I think what you're saying is like, so if you did a ninety-thousand-dollar construction project, the cost would end up being fifteen thousand fifty dollars. Fifteen hundred and fifty dollars.
Yeah, if that's what it comes, you did the math, yeah.
So that's, I think, where he's coming in. So like, if you did...
What would this be, fourteen?
Where if you decided just to spend an extra ten thousand, you can get it done for five hundred dollars.
Are you proposing an increase?
Well, I guess I'm proposing that the ninety thousand in construction costs less than the hundred, so how, I don't know if there should be like a max, or I don't know, are we a decimal? Do we mean like fifteen per every ten thousand at that point, instead of one thousand? I don't know, something, I think the steps need to be just slightly changed, if it was plus five bucks or something, I don't know, five comes in, whatever that number is, you know, just so that, it just seems silly that like ninety thousand in construction will cost more than a hundred thousand.
Yeah. It could also be looked at, if you do more in construction, you get a hundred-dollar break. So we look at it, right?
It's like a thousand-dollar break, but, well, I guess, I kind of agree with Councilman DeMonaco here, because, like, I can't, if I wanted to put an addition on my house, like, I can't control what those costs are. You know what I'm saying? Like, what am I gonna do, just make up ten thousand dollars more in costs so I can save the money? I mean, no, I need to go with the higher bidder. I can't go with the lowest bidder, because otherwise I'm paying more in fees at the city side.
Where's our high school algebra teachers? I think we just need to solve for x here. I mean, we don't need to right at this moment, for sure.
Right. Okay.
That was awesome. So we're just actually marking.
So if we make the adjustment to the fifteen per ten thousand, that would make that adjustment as you had mentioned?
Yes.
If council's okay with that?
And I think we probably need to look at the next two rows, too, or whatever, because I think that'll line up.
It would be moving down, so it'd be that over five hundred, too. Yeah, perfect. Thank you for catching that. All right. All right, going into electrical. Let's see. So we actually removed the administrative fee, which was the permit fee times fifteen percent from all trades fee schedules. It's just the one initial application fee, not the additional administration fee. So that has been removed. There was an increase in the fire alarms, over twenty, well, over twenty fire alarms, and then the data telecommunications outlet. Again, we did the calculation on the old and kind of ran into the same issue. Also, on all three of them, plumbing mechanical and electrical, there was a continuation inspection, which was a little confusing, because there was also a line item for an additional inspection. So the continuation inspection was actually removed from all three of those. And then in line with the fee studies that were done, the electrical, electrical, mechanical and code review was decreased from thirty percent of the permit fees to twenty-five And one of the changes from the plumbing fees was decreasing the over-two-inch pipe of the water distribution pipe. And again, same thing with the plumbing code fee, reduced to the twenty-five percent of the building code fee. Are there any questions on the trades piece? All right. So move into the city clerk. There were not many changes in this. You will see on the new schedule, the IRS 501(c)(3) solicitors were put into one-line items, so that was just reorganized and not removed. The ice cream vendor from the old was moved into the police department, as they handle those inspections for the ice cream vendors. And then there was an increase on the voter listing on USB or email. It used to say CD, but we've been purchasing USBs, so part of that is recouping the cost that we incur for purchasing the USBs versus a CD. We removed the election results, everything is posted by the county, so we removed that. And though, the rest of it stays the same for the clerk's office. There was a removal of the temporary structure, as that goes through ZBA, so they've already processed the additional fees through the building department, so that was removed from the clerk's office. And then the transfer of a license, we've not been transferring business licenses, you reapply for a different business that goes into the location, so that was removed as well. We can move forward if no one has questions on the clerk's fees.
No questions.
All right. So we did add language from the recent policy that was updated for FOIA for the city manager fees. Those change and are dependent on the department that conducts the FOIA, so that language was attached where the policy is at there. Let's see. There were no updates to the finance fees, no updates to the fire fees. Library, there were some additions or some changes, some small changes. On the previous fee schedule, it wasn't technically finalized, so we did finalize that on the new listing. The loss or damage book did have an increased fee on the new fee schedule. And then we did take away the videocassettes as a recommendation from the director. We did increase the fee for auto manuals that are not returned, seems like that might be a problem. And then we can move into PD if there are no questions. All right, so PD fees. You'll see on the previous ordinance, there was actually two ordinances, the initial ordinance that you have, and then there was an additional ordinance that had additional fees for the police department. We've combined those into just this one fee schedule to be organized. There is an increase on the sixth time for fire alarm fees. The ice cream truck inspection, again, got relocated into this line item. And then impounded vehicles, there was also an increase for those fees. And no additional changes to the police department fees. If we don't have any questions, we can move forward. Public works as well. Again, we reorganized the right-of-way permits into the public works fees. We also identified the alley vacation fees, which include the attorney and consultant fees, so that is located here as well. And then there are no additional changes. Oh, you will see the fee in Louisville Tree is listed in public works, that's at five-hundred-dollar fee to discourage people from doing so. And then there are no additional fees in public works or the water and sewer. Are there any other questions that I can answer for the fee schedule?
Council? Say none.
Our motion, we introduce and give first reading to ordinance number twenty-two-dash-1223, for an ordinance to amend the codified ordinances of the City of East Point by replacing section two-dash-five-twenty-five with a new section two-dash-five-twenty-five entitled "City Fee Schedule for Public Records and City Services and Programs."
Support. Motion in support. Please call the row.
Councilmember DeMonaco?
Yes.
Councilmember Lucido?
Yes.
Councilmember Curly?
Yes.
Mayor Owens?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
You're moving right along. Good work, Ms. Walton and staff for this, and Councilman DeMonaco for saying that error that I think a lot of contractors would thank you for. And residents. Next is item F, finalize contract for city manager position. Council?
Yes, Madam Mayor, if I may?
Yes, ma'am, please.
Can we just go through, like, each section?
Sounds good to me.
Okay.
You wanna do it?
Yeah, I can do that.
Okay.
So starting with section number one, duties, does anyone have any proposed changes or to what she has proposed? All right, moving on to section two, which is the term. Does anyone have any questions in regards to changes they'd like to make under the term? If not, I do have one. I would like to move the line that says, "In the event the manager is terminated before January first, 2025, they will revert back to the assistant city manager role." And my main reason for doing that is, first of all, the assistant city manager role is a civil service position, so I don't know if we can legally do that. Also, if we already have another assistant city manager in place, I would not want to, obviously, demote them. You know, I don't know even if we could legally do that either, because that also is a civil service position, so I'd like to remove that if council would agree.
Yeah, Mr. Albright, I'm sorry. And Mr. Albright, no, he's an attorney, is that something we can do if she did, if we did agree with this part and saying that? Because I know when I used to work for the city of Detroit, and we didn't want, we didn't wanna stay in that position, they would revert us back to our old position as far as seniority. Oh, I know they do that in different communities, but...
Yeah, I'm not aware of that ever being done here in the city of East Point. And so, again, this would be up to the discretion of the city council, but it hasn't been done before. I know that the labor council, Mr. Fornier, had some concerns about that provision as well, but again, I'm not aware of anything that would prevent that from happening.
Okay. So, like I said, I can make a motion to remove that from the proposed contract?
I mean, I think your motion is pretty much based on concerns that we can or can't do it.
Well, yes, it's not, like I said, I don't want to, I would not want to put in a new assistant city manager in the position where they would not, where we would have to demote them. So, yes, I want to remove it for sure. It's not about whether we can or cannot. I wouldn't want to put anyone's other job in jeopardy also to...
Council, any conversation on that?
Yeah, go ahead.
So, yeah, I'll make the motion to remove that from section two.
Support.
Motion in support. Call the row.
Councilmember Lucido?
Yes.
Councilmember DeMonaco?
Yes.
Councilmember Curly?
Yes.
Mayor Owens?
No.
Councilmember Baker?
No.
Okay, next question?
So, so section three, I don't know if anyone has any questions or concerns about the proposed changes in section three?
We did three last time, so this will be up to six, I guess, just informational piece in our last, last contract for the severance, sorry.
So, because we removed the, going back to assistant city manager, and I know how long it takes to hire a city manager, so even if Ms. Walton wanted to apply somewhere else, if she was terminated, I think paying her for six months would be, I would be okay with that, with keeping it the six months that she's requesting.
Six months, yeah.
That's fine.
Council? Okay.
Section four, the manager's salary shall be a hundred twenty-six thousand, any, let's see, oh, we have that. Oh, and the merit increases. Does anyone have any questions or concerns about that?
No.
How do, I think I have a, how do these work right now?
The cost of living adjustments? I mean, if, where it says approved by the city council for department heads, if we approve them, it's only through approving the budget. We don't actually give raises to department heads. So I, well, I guess this is an inquiry, I don't know how...
So, actually, I mean, I'm sure they'll come and answer you, but I would prefer doing just like a standard two percent raise every year because of the fact that the city manager's position is to negotiate the department head raises, so if she had it in there, she'd be also negotiating her own raises. So if we were going to do some sort of cost of living adjustment, I think just a flat two percent every year would be cleaner, and then she would just get the flat two percent increase every year commencing July first, 2023.
And that's what we do for other people that work, like AEW, when they come to us every couple of years, is it two percent?
It's usually like a percentage, depending on, you know, what they're proposing, but two percent is usually like the standard cost of living increase per year. I don't know if council would agree to change that to just like a flat two percent.
Every year?
Yeah. Start, commence, starting July first, 2023.
I agree.
Any other conversations on that?
Does everyone agree with that?
Well, I don't know if, well, I agree that the one sentence needs to go, but I don't know about the two percent increase each time, but...
Do you propose?
Someone make a motion, I guess.
What do you propose?
Just keep, I think, generally, we've just, you know, kept the same salary for each of the, well, we've usually had two-year contracts, so both years were just the same amount, and then generally, we'd give a raise at that point.
And that's the only, because this is a three-year contract, I guess is the only reason why I'm proposing the raise, if it was only two. So, yeah, I will make the motion to change that wording, I'm sure Mr. Albright will write this a lot better than I'm gonna say it, to just a standard two percent increase starting July first, 2023.
Support.
Motion in support. All the row, please.
Councilmember Lucido?
Yes.
Councilmember Curly?
Yes.
Mayor Owens?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember DeMonaco?
No.
And so the next one is directly following approval of this agreement, the manager shall be paid for the previously accumulated comp time, vacation time earned, as the assistant city manager at the last rate earned as the assistant city manager. I'm completely fine with leaving that in there, because we have to pay her out eventually anyways, whether it be at the end of her contract or now, you know, at the end of her tenure or now, so I would be fine with keeping that in if our city council's okay.
Yes.
Sounds good to me.
Isn't this slightly different, though? Because we'd be just paying out any time and then basically just giving it back, right? Like, I mean, I don't know the exact, you know, numbers. I guess what would this cost? I guess I'd just be interested.
So actually, I have a question for Mr. Albright about this. So this, this section right here, I mean, I don't, does this even need to be in the contract? Because wouldn't she just get paid out because she's switching positions? Like, if she was quitting the assistant city manager position, we would be paying her this amount, correct?
I don't know as if it's automatic.
The payout is...
The payout is automatic if they terminate employment. She's, she's not terminating employment. She's just moving to a new position that's contractual. So, whether, whether it's paid out now with the contract or when her time here ends, she's going to get paid out for it. And in the, right now, we accrue it on a per paycheck basis. It's not given upfront. So, you wouldn't be paying it out and then giving it back. She's getting, would be getting a new bank of paid time off.
So, I guess my question for you, Mr. Blum, then, is that if we didn't, if we didn't, let's say, remove this section, she would just, this time would just be added to what's in this contract, is what you're saying?
No, the time would just sit in a non, non-city manager bank of leave time.
That she would eventually get paid out, huh?
Yes.
Yeah, so eventually she would be, so...
But I would caution you that if she left as a city manager, she would get paid out at the city manager rate at a later date because you get paid out at whatever you're making at the point you leave. If you pay her out now at the Assistant City Manager rate, it will be significantly less expensive.
Okay. That's, that's the way I understood it too, so...
Kind of a strange way to, to do things. Because she, she can't use that time then, once we do this new...
She, she can't use it, but she doesn't lose it either. It's an earned accrued benefit that can't be taken away. So, it would just sit there until she's finished employment with the city.
Okay. Do we know how?
I would, I, I did sit, do you have the numbers, Mr. Blum?
No, I'm not aware of what her bank is, so I'd have to go calculate that.
You could send that to us.
Thought I wrote it down. So, yeah, I'm fine with keeping, keeping that in there and just paying her out now. I believe it was Ms. Walton, and I talked about this earlier, and I think it was equivalent to $8,500? Does that seem right? Or no, maybe not that much?
No, it was $102 comp and $117 vacation.
Okay, so, yeah, $219. All right. Any other questions?
Not yet.
Okay, so, moving on to, well, the next one, if there's any changes, is seven, which she's just asking for optical, dental, educational assistance and health and wellness incentive pay. Does anyone have any, any questions about those items?
I had a question about the educational assistance. How would, I guess, how does that work? I don't really know exactly how that would work either.
Mr. Blum, can you explain that for, for us, please?
Got to keep moving the mic back and forth here. Within the admin rules and regs, there is a clause that if an employee is working on a degree that is specific to, or I should say, that benefits the City of East Point, whether it be, you know, a finance person working on a finance degree or, you know, I don't know what you would be working on, but it has to be, unfortunately, it's approved by the city manager. So, that puts her in a unique position to approve her own, you know, classes. But it is within the admin rules that if it's approved, an approved program, that the city reimburses the employee if they can see her better in the class.
So, should we change it for the educational assistance just to be approved by city council? Because like Mr. Blum said, he would be approving, she would be approving her own, usually approved by the city manager?
Well, because what, Ms. Doome wasn't using it? Well, no other city manager?
Yeah, it was not, it wasn't a Ms. Doome's contract.
Okay. Well, we can do it the same way as we do as counsel. We have to approve our, when we go to class, right? Each other's, which is...
Right. Yeah, I mean, it doesn't, it doesn't matter to...
I mean, when she take the classes, if it's not, you know, according to, I mean, I guess I'm trying to say...
Or we can just have the finance director sign off on it?
Wow.
I mean, I don't know...
I work for the city manager, so no.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
All right. What do we do with that, then?
I, I don't know. Do you guys have a suggestion?
I mean, it can come, I mean, if it, if it's in the, in the lines of the education that, you know, it's for the City of East Point. If it's on the lines of the education that would better the City of East Point, then, I mean...
Right.
What would be an example? I mean, Ms. Walton's got a Masters of Public Administration. What college courses would we be approving? I guess that would make sense directly related to the position of city manager, then?
Anything with policy, government, public service? I mean, that is, that's very broad. I can't tell you all the classes. It's very broad. I don't think she would take, I mean, classes to be astronaut or anything like that. If it helps the city, then, yeah, but...
I might vote for that, though.
I mean, yeah.
She wants to become an astronaut, we will...
I mean, why not? I mean...
So, I, like I said, we can always just change it where it comes to council for approval at that time. And that way, then, there's no, you know, questions. I mean, so, you want to make that motion?
Sure. I'll motion that Part G in Section Seven about the educational assistance, 7.08, just come to council for approval.
Support.
Motion and support. Please call the row.
Councilmember DeMonaco?
Yes.
Council, Councilmember Lucido?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Curly?
Yes.
Mayor Owens?
Yes.
All right, then, the next part that was changed, besides some grammar errors, is the monthly car allowance. Anyone have anything?
You mean suggestions of what it should be?
Well, she's, it was 300. She's requesting 450.
I think that's, you know, with three years, I think this contract is old. So, with the price of gas almost being $5 and insurance rates going up, I think this is fair. I would have gave her a little bit more, though. I would have gave her at least 500 a month, a little bit more than that.
So, Councilman DeMonaco, you're thinking? All right, so, we can just leave it at the 450 that she's recommending, then?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
450 is good.
All right, so, next one, move down to vacation, sick time, and other leave time. She's requesting be credited 33 days of annual leave, I think from 30 days. Does anyone oppose to that? Okay. And then, she's requesting that from all to 20 be used, leave days from the previous contract shall be carried over to the next contract year. So, she's removing the not, so she wants 20 days, she wants her to be able to roll over, I think, 20 days is what I understand it for a year.
Okay.
So, you could be taking 50, 53 days off in one year, then? Right is what that's saying?
She could, she could take 73 days off in one, in two years.
Oh.
That's where your contract, so...
Counsel, any concerns on that? Roll over?
I'm good. You know, y'all talking to a union man here, so my perspective is a little different. I'm good.
Well, we want to know your perspective. It's like, yeah.
When I say my perspective is different, I'm good with it.
Oh, yeah.
I like benefits, so, no, that one doesn't matter.
About that one?
I'm good with that, what she's asking.
No. Doesn't look like I'll be, I'm not sure I am, but... Doesn't sound like...
So, the manager, huh? Go ahead.
Just go on.
The manager shall elect to turn in not more than 40 hours or a total sum of $1,750 of annual leave time for deposit directly into the Management Health Savings Account, not more than once per calendar year.
That was in the old contract, right?
This is new, I believe.
Okay. The one I got printed out is highlighted and then is deleted. Okay.
So, I mean, I'm fine if she puts time in there instead of using it into herself's savings account.
I guess it's just like a higher, higher wage, then?
Well, she would be using her, her sick days though for it, right?
Also, yeah, she's negotiating three, so only be down two days and getting the $1,750. It'll cost the city an extra $1,750.
Mayor, if I could, I currently earn 33 days, so it's not an additional three days of vacation. It's keeping what I currently earn. And the benefit for HSA, right now, you can cash in 40 hours of your sick time into your HSA. So, it's basically keeping my benefits the same in the contract is what I have now. It's not increasing anything or costing anything or increasing the wage by any way.
I'm saying compared to the last city manager contract.
No, I'm, I'm fine with keeping it.
I don't have a problem what she's asking for, if I'm not.
Okay. And so, then, that's it. That's the only change that she had besides the date, so that seemed to go pretty smooth. So, do we need to make another motion or because we already made a motion to change this, or is that okay?
I'd recommend another motion just because there was essentially a counterproposal. And now, the council's voting on approving these proposed changes as recommended by Ms. Walton.
All right, so, I'll make the motion to vote on the contract with the proposed changes that we agreed upon tonight.
Support.
Motion and support. Please call the row.
Councilmember Lucido?
Yes.
Councilmember Curly?
Yes.
Councilmember DeMonaco?
No.
Mayor Owens?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Thank you. I, I'm, I've always got somewhat confused, Mr. Albright, when we're doing these negotiations and it's in the public and we have the person here, we don't go and have a conversation, you know, and asking her, would she take it? We can know, we can hire her right now?
The council could do that if it chose to do so.
Okay.
Or it could proceed under the process it utilized this evening.
Okay. Or ask the person that is, which is Ms. Walton, did you like the, you know, the terms and conditions? Or, you know, things like that?
Yeah, there, there essentially was an offer that was made and agreed upon by the council to offer the previous city manager's contract. That contract was extended to Ms. Walton. She reviewed it and then essentially made a counteroffer with additional provisions. And now, the council has accepted that counterproposal minus just a couple of small changes.
And now, we have to see if she wants to, will she better?
And, and Madam Mayor, if I may, I mean, I did sit down with Ms. Walton today, too, and we went through the contract. So, I, I'm, I'm feeling pretty confident she's going to accept the vote. So, I hope she does also.
Okay, sounds good.
Madam Mayor, I'll, oh, sorry, go ahead.
Did you already do the...
No, I was going to do the payroll and bill, but you can actually announce it, yes.
Okay, well, go ahead. Look, we trying to go, look, go ahead.
Trying to power through here. Madam Mayor, I'll motion to pay the bills in the amount of $2,681,662.52, 53 cents.
I support.
Motion and support. Please call the row.
Councilmember Lucido?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Curly?
Yes.
Mayor Owens?
Yes.
Councilmember DeMonaco?
Yes, yeah, don't cut that penny, Mayor.
Next is the second hearing of the public. The second hearing of the public is now open. If anyone would like to speak at this time, you are welcome to go to the podium at this time.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Council. My name Larry Edwards, East Point Residence. I'm just concerned continually about any updates to the roads service and especially with the addition to funds being received. And if there is anything that's been already decided and put aside for the, for the work for the road services to be done. That would be able to get the roads to where they need to be for, especially the ones that were voted down after they had been promised to do something about and to see if those, and hopefully that those will be the first ones on the list with the funds that's been received. And hopefully, the funds are going to the roads, repair for the service.
Thank you, Mr. Edwards. Anyone else would like to speak at this time? Anyone else? Yes, ma'am.
Still same person, Karen Moragin, East Point resident. So, just to, you know, quickly wrap up from my first comments. So, now that we have a city manager, you know, whoever can enforce this nuisance tenant ordinance, it doesn't matter to me which department does it, who does it. I'm just asking, somebody put a stop to all of this. This has been going on for over a year. Enough is enough. You know, Great Lakes Renaissance properties, they need to be held accountable. And so do these nuisance tenants. No one should have to put up with this. This is just, it's so out of control and it's ridiculous. And I really don't want to have to keep coming back again and again and again asking the city to act on this. Because there's other matters that are important to discuss that benefit the community as a whole. You know, there's a, there's a package of House bills that, right now, there's not much being done. But it does pertain to amending the bills in regards to court-appointed guardian ad litem's and conservators who are just not doing right by the families. When you have a loved one who is deemed incompetent, typically, it's dementia. That's, that's really tough to go through. It, it impacts the entire family. And when you watch your loved one deteriorate and there's nothing you can do, it, it literally breaks your heart. You know, families, you know, probate attorneys, that's, that's how they make their money. You know, when you got dysfunctional families and they don't get along and one person manages to sucker and con and manipulate and coerce, you know, the incapacitated individual into, you know, handing over the keys to the kingdom. It's an absolute nightmare, you know?
Let me see.
Probate, it gets outrageously expensive. So, everyone who's dealing with this, you know, please do everything you can to be there for your loved one. And I hate to say it, but if you got a really nasty family member, you got no choice but to lawyer up and hold them accountable because they'll destroy everything. Thanks.
Thank you for that update. Anyone else would like to speak at this time? Anyone else? Seeing none? The second hearing of the public is now closed. We are going straight to mayor council reports, starting with Councilman Baker.
Thank you, Mayor.
Yes, sir.
All right, just, I want to say thank you to everybody for coming out. Welcome to our new residents who came out. They said this is their first council meeting. So, we just thank you for being involved and concerned with what's going on. Thank you to the police department. I know we recognize them and also our first responders. That is a job that is very much needed and very much appreciated, I can say for myself. So, I'm just thankful that there are people out there that are willing to put their lives on the line to make sure... on the line to make sure that we're safe, uh, in the community. And ending on a positive note with my word of the day, it's a simple one, it's inexhaustible, and that is a supply that is incapable of being used up or depleted, and, uh, in our display of kindness, love, and compassion, uh, it should be a supply, uh, inexhaustible supply inside of us, that's all I have, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Curley?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, I have a, a few things, uh, first two things are more light than what I, the other things, first of all, we all would agree that now that we're wearing masks, it's a little bit harder to hear one another, so, a- and that's one thing. And I gue- I guess I'm never gonna get my way, uh, is I've, I can't tell you how many times I'd asked that why can't we have a handheld mic up at the podium for the hearing of the public, uh, it's hard for people aren't gonna stick their nose under the microphone and speak, so a handheld mic, I think, would, would help. And the other thing, administration, don't, and don't, don't answer my question, but I don't have a clue what's on the screen, um, don't answer, Councilmember, because I must have been sleeping in the wood, not saw. Well, if it's, if it's nothing, then it would be nice to have that screen lift up so all the folks here in the room can see, we now... Oh, boy. And I'm, I am so happy for this, we now have every single person that was the mayor in East Point, uh, halfway, um, the la- last two we had was, um, um, Milma Hellick there, and the other one was, um, help me out, you can, what? Mildred Stark, up there, the young lady, so I am very proud that, uh, the city has gotten to that, and we have a hundred percent participation. I've attended our library meeting, uh, this afternoon, and I do have to make an announcement, they are having some incredible things, um, so you can get your pencils out, or you can call the library for an update again, but, uh, on June fourteenth, that's on a Tuesday, they're gonna have Jackie and Gray come and sing, uh, a- at the library. Uh, Jackie, uh, was in the original New Christie Mentrels, okay? That's fantastic, she has sung with Sammy Davis Junior, John Denver, and many other people, so they'll be playing songs from the sixties, and, you know, Puff the Magic Dragon, and things like that, so I'm, I'm very happy to announce that. We have a school board member by the name of, um, Keith Ward, Keith has stage four sarcoma, and they are having a fundraiser spaghetti dinner, um, to help with the, uh, cost, it's gonna be on Tuesday, May twenty-fourth, uh, it's gonna be at the Firehouse Pub on Mac Avenue in St. Clair Shores. That's a lot of information to come by, but I'm sure our administration will write that down, so you can call here at City Hall, and they'll give you an, an update on that. And my last thing, Madam Mayor.
Yes, sir.
When is it gonna stop? The horrible murders that happened Saturday, some of us, most of us, just can't comprehend what happened, um, these folks went to the grocery store that they had there, it's not a supermarket, just grocery store, people come there not only to buy groceries, but to come and communicate with other, each other in, in that neighborhood, what's going on, what's going on, how's, how's Aunt Martha, how's, how's Grandpa doing? And Neil Mc- Neil McNeil, uh, Andre McNeil came there, fifty-three years old, and he wanted to buy a cake for his three-year-old son. His three-year-old son never seen that cake, and his dad didn't get to go to that birthday that day. And then Pearl Young, I looked at that, I looked at that picture, you know, forgive me, CDC, I'm gonna take this down the street, um, I looked at the picture of Pearl with her hat on, um, seventy-seven years old, still teaching part-time at one of the high schools in the neighborhood, um, has a place where people could come and ca- get food every week on Saturday, and I, and I looked at that picture, and I said, she must have been an incredible woman to sit down with and talk to, that she would have the stories that you would be so enthroned to and, and so excited to hear, and not trying to evile the other eight people, but just those two struck me pretty hard. So, I guess the last thing I would say, Madam Mayor, would be that, uh, we need to pray, we need to pray for the families, um, that they can get through this horrible, horrible thing that happened, and that somehow, someday, that this would not happen again. I don't know what it's gonna take, it's gonna take all of us to begin with, it's gonna take the federal government to decide, now is the time to do something, I don't know. But I brought these things up, ladies and gentlemen, because, like yourself, my heart is so full of sadness, I guess would be a good word, sadness, and it's gonna take a long time, I think, for me to come back to what I normally am, so, thank you, that's it, Madam Mayor.
Councilman DeMonaco?
Uh, thanks, Mayor. Yeah, it is, thanks, Councilman Curley, it's, uh, terrifying, and to, to see that, and just even try to imagine, you know, what's happened, uh, hopefully, our country can, uh, move on that and prevent this from happening in the future, since it seems like it's a phenomena that seems to occur only in our country. Um, the Beautification Commission, they did their perennial exchange a couple weekends ago, that went really well, uh, they, uh, did a, the event with the library again, so look out for those if you're looking for some new plants in your yard, you know, last year I dug a couple of mine out and brought them, 'cause, uh, uh, was it aconacia, uh, whatever I had goes nuts, and, uh, I had plenty to spare, and, uh, someone took those home, so it's pretty cool that, you know, it's going from my yard to someone else's yard, so, next time we do that, bring some of yours, maybe come home with something else, and, uh, you might have saw them in the median, if you drove on Grashit at all this weekend, they were cleaning up the flower bed, looks really nice, uh, so check that out, it's the, uh, second flower bed, well, you'll see the big sign that says Beautification Commission, but second flower bed just north of Nine Mile, um, on Grashit, and then, I think really, other than that, uh, Memorial Day, Monday, May thirtieth, tell all your friends and all the kids you know to come collect some candy on Stevens, going from the Military Museum to Spindler Park, um, uh, you know, uh, come out, and we'll honor, you know, those that, uh, gave all for, in service to the country, and, you know, hopefully we can, you know, see each other and, uh, you know, get back to doing things like, like that, I mean, I'm saying this now, we're wearing masks and are meeting, but the parade's outside, so no worries about that then, but, um, you know, hopefully, we can get a greater handle on COVID also, and, um, you know, hopefully, this, uh, Ukraine invasion ends also, um, but, uh, yeah, I think, uh, that's all, Madam Mayor.
Hey, thank you. Um, Councilwoman?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor, so first, I'd like to, uh, thank everyone for coming out tonight, um, I would also like to thank Pastor Friedman and, um, for hosting the PACE meetings this afternoon, and for Ms., to Ms. Walton for coming out and speaking at the PACE meeting, um, we have those meetings usually once a month, and they're always a great turnout, I encourage residents to look into PACE, um, it's, it's a really phenomenal group, um, to work with, and I'm really proud that I'm a member. Um, also, I'd like to remind everyone that the Eastwood Odd Fellows is having a free breakfast on Memorial Day for all of, any veterans or first responders, and any, everyone's welcome to come, it's five dollars for everyone else, so if you know any veterans or first responders, or if you just wanna go out and have a good breakfast, I suggest you head over there, that's from eight till eleven o'clock, and then afterwards, you can walk over to Stevens and watch the parade. We also, um, have the Grashit Cruise coming up, so with the war- while they're warming up, we have all kinds of great events happening in the city, so hopefully, you know, anyone who has a old car, who'd be interested in, uh, participating, you can contact Councilman Curley down there, um, but yeah, I, a lot of great events, I'm happy that the weather's finally warm, and that everyone's getting outside, I'm seeing some of my neighbors that I haven't seen in a couple of months, everyone's out walking their dogs, and, um, you know, going on those evening strolls, which is really nice to see, so, uh, make sure to remember to always be a good neighbor, I think that, um, your neighbors sometimes can be the most important people around you, because they're right next door, and they're easy to depend on, and I know, I am really lucky, 'cause I have really good neighbors, and we all watch out for each other all the time, so, and, uh, thank you to Director Rohib for the Neighborhood Watch Meeting, I'm sorry I wasn't able to attend, but, um, I talked to some of my neighbors that were there, and they are definitely always very appreciative of you doing that, so, and that's all I have this evening, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilwoman, I wanna say thank you, uh, to the new people who came tonight, um, and seeing how this is, how government is ran, and being a part of the process, and also to the directors, and also, I'm glad we did the proclamation for our first responders, which included our Public Works Department, because they go down and deal with water and sewage, and I think it was, what, just last year, someone lost their life, so you got a lot of things, uh, people are putting, you know, their heart and their lives into, to make sure that we have a better quality of life, so thank you for what you do. Um, also, we have the Boys and Girls Club, we'll be having their flag football this Thursday, I believe it's this Thursday, May nineteenth, from five to seven, um, it's at the former, former East Point Alternative Center, located at one-five-three-two-zero, East Nine Mile Road, in East Point, Michigan, I love what they are trying to do with the city of East Point and our youth in the surrounding area, I went to go see, um, I was invited to go see a, um, a sample of what they did in a location in Detroit, they had the Red Wings Foundation actually, uh, sponsor, uh, in building and upgrading the, uh, Boys and Girls Club, which they will be doing with the city of East Point, and they also have over two hundred thousand dollars that they wanna invest in our East Point High School, uh, for their track and field, so, um, even though that they, uh, are in our community, they are using their funds to make our community better, um, and they don't have to do that, so I'm glad I'm a part of that. Also, um, I'm glad that our Chamber of Commerce has actually been, uh, actually superseding expectations, we have a women in business that they do, I believe, once a month, um, or every two weeks, so if you're a woman in business, and you have, wanna start your own business, or want training and things like that, or education, um, our Chamber of Commerce, um, East Point Roseville, Ms. Linda, Y-SOP has been doing an amazing job, I go to a couple of them, I'm a, a business owner of several businesses, so, um, we get to network, you get to meet other business owners in the city, and also throughout the community, and, um, spread your wings, so I love it, tomorrow, um, the next one that we have in this, uh, May nineteenth, and they're gonna have two, but one is gonna be in the city of East Point at Donna's at nine AM, so Donna's is right there on Kelly Road in Ten Mile, so meet us out there, and we're doing something special for the waitresses out there, so we wanna support those that come out and serve us, again, we are a city that loves to serve those that serve us, and also, uh, Auspaus is a veterinarian clinic, I believe, that, that hospital that services for low income, um, and they would have a grant opening June tenth, uh, twenty-twenty-two, so I've visited them a couple times, I think they had a pre-grant opening, it's something small, and then, uh, my daughters love cats, uh, we have two of them, unfortunately, so they want another one, but I took them up there to see, um, the, the animals up there, and I asked, and I told them if they need, um, volunteers, that me and my daughters would be open to doing that, so we love animals, but they just mess up my furniture too bad, so, um, also, I wanna thank everyone who came out to the cleanup initiative, our first one, it was phenomenal, it looks amazing, and the second one is actually this Saturday at ten AM, and I wanna thank everyone that came out, um, we had a really good time, my daughters came out, um, I always try to teach them how to, uh, serve the community, uh, and they, they loved doing it, it gets them out to see that, you know, that they're not entitled, and, uh, to get out and help others, even though that, uh, those are less fortunate than them, and those that are not, we all need the same, uh, better quality of life, no matter, uh, what race and how much money you make, we all want clean water, food, and safety, right? And so, um, the, the first one was amazing, I wanna thank everyone who came to that, that doesn't even live in the city, that came and sponsored and helped with that, and also those that was part of our National Day of Prayer, that was phenomenal, I believe that was the first one that we had in the city of East Point, when we have people from all denominations, whether you're Catholic, or Christian, or Muslim, we invited all walks of, you know, religions and, uh, backgrounds to that, and it was phenomenal, so we wanna make sure that grows and grows, that, you know, a community that prays together stays together, I believe in that, and also, um, I talked about the Boys and Girls Club, we talked about the cleanup initiative that's coming up, and, um, I wanna say thanks to the beautification, 'cause I did see them in the median, I, I blew my horn to show support, and, you know, it was hot that day, so to get out there and make sure our city is looking well, I wanna say thank you to anyone and everyone that helps out, uh, make the city, uh, beautiful, and I have a, uh, um, something small to say to Councilman Baker, so I was at Office Depot, and they have a game called, or it's a game, or a calendar called Word of the Day, so... So I don't know if they copied off you, you need, you should've, you did something with that, and, I don't know, but it's a calendar called Word of the Day, and I just thought of you, like, you gotta go get it, so, um, saying that, again, I wanna thank everyone that came out, and the new people that came out to show love and support, please invite more people to hear what's going on, and email us, and let us know what you wanna see from us, and how we can better serve you, um, as your elected officials, so moving forward, for adjournment?
Some would support.
Motion to support, please call the row.
Councilmember McCurley?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Mayor Owens?
Yes.
Councilmember DeMonaco?
Yes.
Councilmember Lucido?
Yes.
Median adjourn, have a good night, everyone.